Okay, let's call our meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody for being here and ask David Rainey if he would offer our invocation tonight. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, items of community interest. And council, you have received a card on each one of your settings for an event that the chamber is hosting with mostly in part with the Bowie Economic Development Board. Let's get all of my boards right from here. The dates are on it and it should be a good informational meeting for business owners. Also, we're closed Monday for a holiday, for President's Day. So, city offices will be closed on Monday, I think it's the 19th. Next, we're going to move to the city manager's report. As you noticed in your packet, Bert was kind enough to put his city manager's report in there, but I'm sure he wants to go over it with you again tonight.
Y'all let me know if you've heard this before. The Mills and Nelson Street Bridge project has been sitting idle, and I've got on here since last Thursday. The contractor didn't show up last Thursday, but Stoney assures me he's gonna show up tomorrow. Anyway, they ran into problems with spring water and a compaction problem with the weight of the concrete cupboards. Engineers missed a warning that we gave them about the spring, the spring water, that is. The soil had been tested for compaction now, and engineers have come up with a plan to put a wetting lattice on top of 26 inches of gravel and then another six inches of gravel on top of the lattice. After this done, the construction company will then lower the concrete cupboards into the creek bottom. The drop box at the intersection will also need to be either lifted out of the ground and demolished, or demolished, and then more lattice and gravel is needed to be installed under the drop box. Some of the work will be done at no extra cost to us, but some of it will cost us. However, we have enough contingency fund in the project to cover the extra cost. Sewer line project is going well. Adkins Street line has been finished and the Lever's Lane line has been finished with a few minor problems, but the contractor has done an excellent job and is working promptly. They're now moving to Aljo subdivision, running lines on Sahara in the alley behind Rayburn Street. This will complete Phase 1 of the sewer line project. We will soon start the bidding process for Phase 2. I think we're in the process of reviewing, two weeks of reviewing the plans to make sure that everything is taken care of. Last week, I sent each of you a letter about the addition of additional transformer for the substation. We have become the, begun the preliminary design phase of the project, which includes contacting Brazos Electric about our intent of adding the transformer, getting the engineers to do the preliminary drawing, and determining the optimal layout with our electric crews. Step 2 will be the design phase and the construction phase after that. In the meantime, we are working on getting the transformer tested and ready for transport to Bowie from BTU. Funding for this project will come from the remaining $1,118,000 that we have not spent from the COVID money. That, this will be on the agenda for our next council meeting for, to inform you about and vote on whether we can spend the money or not. You may have noticed that we're having excessive number of water leaks due to the freezing weather, and then the quick warm-up has caused the ground to move a lot lately. If it will make you feel any better, all cities, large and small, are having the same water leak problems. The only solution to this problem is to replace as many old water lines as possible with the limited funds available. It's an ever-ending process. The week before last, Kirk Higgins wrote another solid waste grant application, and I presented it to the scoring committee at Nortech. We were awarded a $9,000 grant for trash containers for use at the city parks and in places else that we need them. There's no match to this grant. We will purchase 10 very attractive trash containers as soon as we get permission from TCEQ that our grant meets all the requirements. As you will recall, we purchased a dump trailer with our last grant award, and there will be another funding cycle next fall for us to do another grant application. So, that's turned into a positive deal because there's, we, this time and hopefully again and again, because there's not very many people that apply for that grant, we all get funded, so that's a, that's a really good thing. Last month, I attended another Tech Dot meeting trying to get funding for three projects in and around Bowie. The railroad bridge on Mill Street is now considered a high priority project. It is ranked number five, the number one five, number five project in the region. However, getting funded from Tech Dot is like pulling wisdom teeth, but hopefully sometime in the future, we will see the bridge widen. The other two projects are widening Y Street from Washington to Lamb, where the lanes are extremely narrow, and a north loop around Bowie to alleviate the traffic problems downtown and get rid of all the trucks downtown. Last Friday, we had a Zoom meeting with our grant writing partner, the public management, and our engineers, Hater Engineering, about our downtown revitalization grant. As you recall, we're going to be working on sidewalks and beautifying Smythe Street from Terrence Street down to Montega Street. We're gonna hopefully start on Montega Street because that's where most of the problems are. We're looking at what will be done in the project. The meeting and subsequent information, after the meeting, there's, we're gonna add, try to add some things to that project. If y'all will recall, there's the planter boxes on Y Street between Smythe and Mason that are overgrown and not very good, and we're gonna try to pour concrete in those as part of an alternate bid on that project. And we're just looking at that right now, more about that later. We had a bid opening last Tuesday on the Community Development Block water line project for Wichita and Hutchinson Street on the south side. We had to include several alternatives for the bid because the prices have gone up since we did the cost estimates for the project. At this point, we do not know whether we will be able to do this project at all because our cost estimates were low, and we need the whole area because the whole area qualified as low to moderate income, but the alternative bids areas won't. We found out today that we, in fact, we've applied to Department of Agriculture for alternative to this, only doing Wichita Street this time with the funds that are available, and hopefully the next funding cycle, we can do Hutchinson Street. A lot of times, if you start a project like this and you don't have enough money to finish everything, they'll let, the very next funding cycle, they'll let you do that. So, hopefully, we're, we'll work on that and get that applied for. Anybody got any questions?
What are we looking at on, do we have pricing on the substation? And like what it'll cost to get set and everything, or are we still in those planning phases? For the substation, getting that here, getting it in place, operational? Do we have a cost on that yet, or are we still working on?
We're still working on it.
Okay.
It'll be on, we'll have more answers for you. It's gonna be on the agenda for the next council meeting, and we'll have hopefully all the answers by then.
And then how long, do we have an estimate on how long we're adding to the Nelson Street project with this?
We're not adding anything to it.
Time-wise?
I don't know. I don't know how to answer that question. It depends on how big a crew they send, spend, and what they do and whatnot. They have at, about a week or two ago, they had 170 days to complete the project, and then they go into, if they don't complete it within the timeline, then we get to penalize them and charge them for so much a day under the contract, do what?
Seven hundred a day.
Seven hundred dollars a day until they finish it. So, they've, they've probably got, what, 150, 160 days now, something like that? So, it'll be done by then, or they'll, we'll get liquidated damages on that contract.
So, go back again with me, what, why is it that we're having to pay extra for this?
Well, we told the engineer about the spring on, on the creek. We let him know that there's a spring there. It was there when I grew up, and I remembered it.
It's always been there, so that one has to pass.
Yeah, and, and he just ignored it. So, we're gonna have to pay for the gravel and, and the digging out, extra for that. And, you know, when engineers make mistakes, we're the ones that pay. So, you know, we take that into consideration the next time we choose an engineer.
I'd hope.
And then, the contractor did not check the compaction of the soil at the drop box on the intersection. Anything dealing with that is gonna be borne by the contractor's cost, so.
So, the additional cost isn't like, I mean, it would have been in the bid from the get-go?
Yeah, if he would have.
If he would have added it in there, that we would have still been spending that? It would've just been, time is what we're losing, it sounds like to me.
That's true.
Because he would've came up with the same plan?
But it's turned into a change order, which will cost us money, but it would have, you know, if we'd have done that, it would have, we would have paid for digging it out anyway and putting that lattice underneath it, so it's just something that's part of what gets done.
What was the outcome of the situation we had where we had the busted water line? And, you know, the costs that we was gonna have to fix that? Wasn't some of that cost gonna go off to the, did we?
We got.
Stoney billed them for it. Stoney billed them back for it.
Okay, 13, we, we got that back? Okay, because you know, at the time, that's great, because we talked about that at that time. We need, we're gonna negotiate that, see what we could do, so.
There was no negotiation. You will pay this because you caused it.
That's the spirit. That's what I like to hear. Just don't lay down.
Any other questions? All right, well then, let's move on to the consent agenda items. The approval of the January 8th and the January 17th regular and special meeting. Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Do you have a second?
Second.
Post. Shaw?
Yes.
Gunnar?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
McEwen?
Aye.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Consider a Compressed Work Week for the City of Bowie. As, in your packet, you saw several different information that both my, all of myself, Bert, and Pamela have presented to you on the research that we've done for the four-day work week. What I'd like to do is have Pamela come up and first talk to you. She's representing the city employees as the HR director tonight. She'll tell you the people that she's talked to and the information that she has.
I'm not gonna read this, well, good evening, mayor and council. I'm not gonna read this too. I'm sure you all read it in your packet. I just wanna let you know that we've been looking at trying to improve morale within the city for the employees, not just us, but the city as general. There's three different ways that I came up with. It can be increased pay, better benefits, accommodating work hours. So, we settled on accommodating work hours. This started way back when, when school went to four days. Had some employees coming to me, and I said, "Well, maybe." And we sort of let it sit for a little while. In the meantime, they talked to Bert a little bit, talked to the mayor, and came back to me. I said, "Okay, we'll put it forward." I'm here on behalf of the employees that came to me. I am pushing this for them, not for myself. And we have some employees here tonight, and if you would, if you feel comfortable, please raise your hand if you support this. Hire. Okay, thank you. It won't work for all departments, as you know. It would be up to, oh, do you mind if I use you, chief? Okay, it'll be up to the fire chief if he would like to go 410s for administration. He has to run 24/7, of course. If he has the staff where he can work 410s, that would be up to the department head. The two departments that this would really work for would be Utility Building and the City Hall Building. We have 90%, as you see, within those two departments. So, I'd like to hear your feedback and your consideration, and if I can, I'll answer any questions. This would be excellent for morale. It would help work-life balance. As you see, I'm not gonna read all those to you. That's boring. So, I'd like to answer any questions you may have, and if I can't, I'll defer them to some that can. Public Works, I'll talk a little bit about that, and Utilities Department. I've talked to both of those department heads. It might not work for their department, but in the summertime, it would. But in the wintertime, maybe not, because it's so, you know, it's dark early when they would arrive, and it gets dark so early in the evenings. But what it was proposed to me, if they could do the 410s through the summer, that'd really help them out on demobilization of equipment. If it doesn't work, we would like to try three to six months and report back. It might not work if they have a big project, but then that would be up to the department head to defer it and say, "Okay, we have a big project coming up. I need you to work Friday, so please go home and do your eight hours for the next couple of days. That way, it frees up four to six hours on that Friday to work without the overtime attached to it." There'd be a lot of moving parts, and we'd have to work pretty hard at this, but it'd really work excellent for the two buildings, building across the street and this building here.
Yeah, lots of questions, I'm sure, but just one that came to mind would, so if you like, coming up on Monday, there's a scenario, would you have a three-day week on that week? Or would you be working on a Friday?
It would be no different. Holidays are holidays. That's in our Personnel Policy Procedure Handbook. And some of you might be aware of, I'm 80, 85% complete with a new policy procedure to bring forth. This is one part where hours are hours, and it's no different than your vacation. We would still accrue the same vacation, 3.08, something in that order, per payroll, but when we took a day off, it'd be 10 hours instead of eight hours. So, when you had a holiday, it would be 10 hours instead of eight hours. It's no different than some of the police department right now. When they take, when they're on a holiday or take a day off, they get the hours they actually work throughout that week. And/or their scheduled, permanent schedule.
And I think a lot of, you know, more so, I love morale, I like, you know, obviously, we've got some, we need some better incentives for retention and other things, and I think those are things that you're working on.
Absolutely.
And this being one of them. The hardest part it comes to swallow is probably the forward-facing, the community-facing departments, like yours and this one here.
Well, what I'm hearing, and I asked the staff over there, pay attention what is being asked of you, and we're hearing a lot of people having to take off a half-day and/or full-day to come see us to conduct business across the street, because they work the same hours we're open. So, if we were open an hour in the morning, they can stop and see us on their way. And if we were open an hour in the evening, when they get home, we're still open. I thought about staggering the staff, but we don't have enough staff. If one person gets ill or on vacation, I don't have enough staff to be able to do that and work them eight hours and eight hours. I thought something about a seven to four and then a nine to six. But if one person becomes ill, there has to be two in that building at all times because of security reasons. I don't have enough staff to be able to do that. So, I did think of different avenues, so we can accommodate our citizens.
Okay, well, I did a little research on it, because personally, I've always been a person that always want to have employee morale. So, is the morale down right now, or is it morale good?
It comes and goes. Morale's morale. We're trying to figure out ways, if our employees are happy, then we cross to our citizens, and if our citizens are happy, then it's citywide. I will let the council know that I received a lot of emails, and I'm going, "Why am I receiving all these emails about this meeting tonight?" Guess what? We're on TML Connect News. A little blurb on there that Bowie City Council is considering the four-day work week. I'm getting numerous emails from small, medium, big, asking me to reply to them after tonight's meeting on how it went. But I didn't realize we were in that little newsletter for TML.
I do notice that all the letters that you provided us with are larger cities.
They are, because they're the ones that are going to. But the ones that I received today, the emails are smaller and/or our size are a little bit bigger, anywhere from 4,000 to 8, 9,000.
Or are any of them close to us? Because I wanted to make sure how, because I've been getting several calls myself regarding, you know, the, how convenient it's gonna be, because I went ahead and I called some of the surrounding towns. I called Henryetta, I called Wichita Falls, I called Jacksboro, I called Graham. I called St. Joe, I called Alvoid, I called Nakona, and none of them have four-day work weeks. And, and I said, "Well, have y'all ever considered that?" I said, "What do you think about the four-day work week?" And they said, "Well, we think it's more convenient for our customers if we have a five-day work week."
Who did you talk to at Graham?
I didn't talk to Graham's person, their own person.
Yeah, the city manager emailed me today and said they were considering it and that he wanted information that we were gonna present tonight.
I just called the city office and talked to one of the people that were there.
I don't want to throw out cities that I talked to yet. I don't do that when they reach out to me on that side. I sort of keep it to me. But they're anywhere from a little bit smaller to our size to bigger. And the bigger ones, I can understand. You know, I was once told, the smaller the city, the more pushback. The bigger the cities, if you make a change, every, the citizens just go, "Well, it's a change." The smaller the cities, you make a change, and everybody talks and you hear about it. Now, I don't know if that's true, because Bowie's one of the smaller ones that I've been in other than recently. But in a bigger area, you make a change and everybody just rolls with it. This is not only for our citizens and our employees. I just think it might be a good fit, and I was asked to present this to the council for your consideration, and we'll move forward with your determination.
I will say that I sat back and I thought about this, and I did do some research. And hear me out on what I have to say, because I got just a little list. And I'm looking at, from what I have experienced with the employees and speaking with them, and as, obviously, as being a citizen in Bowie. I believe that if we go to a four-day work week that is going to be providing our employees with more family time with their kids or their spouse. It saves money on childcare now that we have a four-day school week. So, that's kind of almost like giving them a raise without giving them a raise, because now they don't have to pay for childcare on Friday, because of the school. They're home with their kids on Friday. It allows the employees to schedule doctor appointments without having to request time off, which you just got done saying, you gotta have two people in there.
That's, yeah, reduced in absent and sick days. That's on my list, yes.
So, if they have to request a time off for work, that's creating a burden on the entire department, because now their workload has increased while that person is at the doctor's office.
And, yeah, it's not only, you know, being ill, but vacations are a little hard. We have to schedule them pretty much way out in advance. And that's for any department, because we're all small departments, not just a department across the street.
And one of the things I've noticed since living here and coming from a big city and things not being so convenient, I guess you would say, is the fact that having an extra hour to be able to get here, to be able to pay your bill, or to be able to do what you need to do in City Hall, means a lot for those that, I mean, because, let me try to get this into the right words. One of the reasons why I decided to homeschool my kids was because I didn't have time to do anything during the day, like if we had to be out of town or if we had to come back into, you know, the rush, the drive to, "I gotta get back by, you know, three or four to get my kids from school and stuff like that." That's the same thing. A lot of our community don't work in our community.
No, they don't. They travel outside.
They're having to take time off of their day to come here so they can finish the business that they need to finish or get done in the specific timeframe of your hours.
That's correct.
So, I am a big supporter of the four-day work week, because to me, it just makes more sense with us being at a four-day school week and then just for the fact of the morale and the fact of, you know, we obviously, we don't have that ability to add additional staff onto our, into our offices or anything like that.
No, if you find that money tree, let me know.
I got one in my yard, and I'm killing it.
The thing that worries me the most, and we've talked about this before, is overtime. And people having to come in and work on Fridays, and it costing us overtime.
You're gonna have some overtime regardless. They do right now, as far as if a water.
On the weekends.
Yeah, and like I said, if there's project, I talked to one department head today, and he really wants to try this, and he doesn't want it mandated if they have a special project on a Friday. And he's the one that brought up to me that he would adjust his time throughout the week for his employees and bring them in on that Friday to complete that task. That's how you work that. That would be no overtime. You're aware of the situation now. If a water line breaks on a Friday, it could, it could not happen. It just depends. I can't say how much overtime it might occur or might not occur. Sometimes we don't, we go days without a water line break, and then other times, we go through three a day.
That's my really big.
Yeah, I understand that.
I think what we need to make the council understand also too is, this doesn't have to happen for every department. Stoney and I had a long talk today. As much as he thinks it would work, and I'm not speaking out of turn, this is exactly what you told me today. As much as he thinks it would work for this building and the finance building beautifully, because he's big on morale issues too, he says it may not work for him. But he does not answer to an hour on the door. This building and the finance building both answer to hours on the door.
He wants to try it.
The judge's office answers to hours on the door. As far as I'm understanding, even she thinks it will be a benefit to, I'm not exactly sure how to phrase this, but to her clientele is for them to be able to come by before work or come by after work.
I think she's open to trying it also.
Yes, so she thinks it's something worth looking at too. And she is another one that has hours on the door. The library is a whole different.
No, they don't have to work.
They have such an odd schedule anyway, because they, they do want to be available to homeschool parents and different things like that. So, the, the, this is really, would only be set in stone for City Hall and the Utility Building and the judge if she decides to go that route.
That's correct.
So, because they have hours on the door.
That's correct.
But every other department would have the, like Kirk, I'm just gonna use Kirk as an example. He's here seven days a week and a lot more than eight hours a day. He wants to keep his mandatory eight to five, of which, have you ever worked a week that was eight to five? I don't think so. So, but he doesn't answer to the public. He comes in his own door. He doesn't have to, so he can work five days a week if he wants to. What our main concern is getting the offices that have to have hours on the door. That's what, that's what we're looking at.
That's correct.
Who's gonna be here on Friday to answer any questions that the citizens may have?
No one.
Although he, yeah, go ahead.
You gonna be here, guy? Well, we're just talking, and not necessarily, I know, yeah, I understand Heather. But if, if someone, you know, wanted to come in to a permit or somebody wanted to come in and, I mean, just have a question or something like, or call in, so when they call in, there's no answer? We just close on Friday?
No, there'll be, there'll be a recorder and saying, "Our hour is open." Once citizens and everybody gets used to that we're closed on Fridays, it might work. We, there's no answers. All we're asking for is you can consider it and let us try it.
I'll give you an example. I had a discussion with Clyde today. And the discussion was, in the winter. And the discussion was, in the wintertime, we won't be able to see to do the things we need.
No, that's what I already said. Yes.
And in the summertime, you know, that'll be great and stuff, and we can mow 10 hours or do whatever we need to do for 10 hours. And I thought to myself, after we had that discussion, we've got some pretty bright department heads, especially, you know, all of them are that way. But the field crews will probably need to play at my ear until we find out exactly how it's gonna work. Some of them can work 10 hours a day, four days. Some of them can't. And we'll let our department heads make a decision, you know, exactly how they want to rule their department.
That's what I presented, yes.
So I, you know, there's no reason not to try it, is the way I understand it.
Well, my other question was just gonna be that, I mean, when I say that somebody here, somebody needs to come in and make a payment, and they don't, you know, and they need to talk about their bill so they don't get a late payment or they don't get anything, and it's because, you know, they get paid on Friday.
We never turn off on Fridays, and we never attach late payments on Fridays for that reason, because a lot of people are working out of town on Friday. They don't answer those calls on Fridays, and I will speak to this.
So if they come in Monday, they're okay, then is what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay.
And I don't like to shut someone off on a Friday and have to go all weekend.
Well, wouldn't we be shutting them off? I was just basically saying if they wanted to make a payment, you know, not because it was bad, you know, I mean, if their payment was due on a certain date, that there was somebody, you know.
No.
I didn't know you didn't do that, because-
Why don't they just put it in the drop box?
And they could just put it in the drop box, but we don't-
If they wanna make a payment, they can put it in the drop box anyway, so.
A lot of them pay online anymore anyhow, and that if they're running late, because it goes directly to us.
Do you have any, do you have a count of like your interactions on, say, a Friday, a typical Friday?
It's hit and miss, depends on when the Friday, if it's on the first of the, you know, first of the month, we're a little bit busier. Towards the middle and the end, we're not very busy. Because a lot of people get paid once a month, we're finding out, and so it's a little bit busier on a Friday at the beginning of the month.
Do you, I guess, throughout the day, on a typical day, when would you see the most of your people? Would they be at the beginning of the day, the very first, or the very end, or?
The very end.
Yeah.
It's like I tell the ladies, don't answer that phone after five after five, because we'll be there till 5:30.
Sure. I mean, I'm inclined to go with your recommendation of at least trying it. I think I've heard from some department heads, I've heard from some employees, a few citizens, and it's all kind of, I don't know, you know, there's not, we're not 100% sure, but
We don't either.
It could be benefit, and it can't cost the citizens, you know, I think that's the biggest thing. It has to benefit them, has to benefit thus as a city, then who knows, maybe we're pioneers in this way.
Well, I tell you what, if the council does approve this, tomorrow I'll be sending off a lot of emails.
So-
We are the pioneers for a city around our size.
Like a three or four-month analysis of how much overtime extra we've had.
Okay, a three-month is, it won't roll into the summer. A six-month is what I would like to ask the council for, because then we're into the summer, and we can really see how it works for what I call our outline departments. You know, they're not City Hall, and they're not finance building per se, outline departments. I think they're gonna really benefit in the summertime, when they can get here early and it's cooler and go ahead and work till it's a little bit cooler. I think they'll get a lot done in between those cold times. So I'd like to try it for six months if the council would agree to this. And we were thinking about giving our citizens a little bit of timeframe on when we go to this schedule, if the council allows.
So I talked to Pam-
It'll start pretty soon, because it starts getting dark again in the fall.
Well, this is, it's only March. We're looking at March, and so you have April, May, June, July, August, September. And that's what we wanted to go through, is through C, September.
From April to September?
March to September.
Mm-hmm.
And it takes, anytime there's a change, it takes at least three months for people to notice there's been a change. I mean, I made the statement today, our meetings for the council have been on the second and fourth Monday for a very long time, and we still have people that don't know when we have council meetings. So it takes, it takes some time to educate the public also.
I'd like to report back in September to the council if this is approved, and let you know how much overtime's, how it increased. Now, the department heads are gonna have to take some onus on this also, if they have big projects up to schedule their staff, so they don't, you know, water breaks are water breaks, sewer backups are sewer backup. Electricity goes out, it's electricity goes out. There's not, you're gonna have that overtime regardless.
But as of now, if there's a water break, water break, and we have to pay extra Saturday and Sunday, this would be-
Friday. But then you have a little bit more time to adjust. That's why we do our payroll Tuesday to Tuesday. You can adjust. You have all day Monday, if you don't have the workload to send a person home a little bit early to reduce overtime hours.
If they agree to that?
That's true. That's true.
They have to, the employees have to agree to work it out, not to have overtime.
To a certain degree. To a certain degree, they do. Okay? I agree with that.
Yes.
So if there's, if we have a council member that's ready to make a motion, I would entertain a motion from the floor.
I'd like to make that motion as presented.
So you would like to motion to-
The six-month test.
The six-month?
For a week, yep.
Trial period with a report from the finance director, HR, at the end of six months.
In September.
Yes. I would like to make that motion.
I was gonna make sure we get it all covered.
One would be the start date.
Yeah, I would amend that with a start date.
So, wait a minute, we need to get a-
March.
We need to get a second before we start a-
Second.
All right, so read the motion back.
I'm gonna pass this as presented, a six-month trial with a report from the HR director in September.
Am I off a month?
When would we like this?
September 1st would be the report time. If it starts, you, now you told me last week that we could start this as early as March 1st.
I'd like to try, yes. If the council deems that is two weeks is enough time to educate our citizens, a little over two weeks.
Okay, so-
Would that include department heads as well, a report from the department heads?
This doesn't include the fire and police, right?
No, no. It's up to their administration, their department heads, if they wanna go 410. This, from the department heads, Chris, Councilman Bates, I don't know what you're asking.
Well, would they, at the end of the six months, do they have a say?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just like they did today.
Okay. Well, I just wanna be sure that it's just not this department, the utilities and City Hall, just all of them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Let me ask that once again.
TJ, seconded.
When you said it's up to the department heads, you're talking about the police and the fire?
And also the public works in electric.
Not for the, not for the-
Emergency service.
The police and the fire department both have administration offices.
Because, yeah, because when I talked to Doug, he said he wasn't, he was not taking a four-day week, isn't that right, Doug?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he would be considered administration. Yes, yes.
I was just trying to clarify her question.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor by Post, the seconded by TJ. Shaw?
Yes.
McEwen?
Hi.
Bates?
Hi.
Post?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Gunner?
Nay. Nothing personal.
All right, so then our consenses are, March 1st is a Friday, so March 1st will be the first day off. Our consenses are that we'll start from March 1st. If you see a significant problem with making that happen, please let Bird or I know immediately.
Absolutely.
But I don't, there shouldn't be an issue with that.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, staff. Thank you for coming and supporting it tonight. All right, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is consider the P and Z recommendation of the reappointment of members Todd Brown and Gary Cunningham, and Mr. Calibretta is headed up to the podium.
Mayor and council members, our Planning and Zoning Commission met on January 18th, 2024 to discuss these matters, and we approached Mr. Todd Brown, if he would still be willing to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board, and he said he would. So that's up to you folks, whether you want to do that or not.
Okay, we have to do these individually, so give us a second. Do I have a motion for Todd Brown to be reappointed?
So moved.
Wow. Okay, we're gonna go Ashley and Gunner. And Shaw?
Yes.
Gunner?
Yes.
Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
McEwen?
Aye.
And Ashley?
Aye.
Our second one is for-
The second one was, we approached Mr. Gary Cunningham, to see if he would be willing to serve, and he's willing, and so we recommend his appointment again. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gunner.
Second.
I hadn't got to your, used to your voice set, TJ. Second with McEwen. Shaw?
Yes.
McEwen?
Aye.
Gunner?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
I think you're still up, Mr. Calibretta.
Okay. And then the next consideration that I have before you is that we had four applicants for the appointment of a new member. I asked for a call for the, a motion. A motion was made for Mr. Burris, and then all of the commissioners were in favor of that, and so that's who we're recommending at this time. We sure appreciate the others that were willing to serve in that capacity.
How many, how many members do you have?
We would have four members and myself, so five members.
Okay.
So do I have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Shaw, do I have a second?
Second.
Bates? Ashley?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Gunner?
Aye.
McEwen?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Calibretta.
Thank you all.
Okay, Stony, we are going to request infrastructure funds for extending the six-inch water line from intersection of Rock and Nelson to the intersection of Lamb and Nelson.
I won't take as much time as Pam did, if you want me out. Just real quick to kind of update our two newest council members. An infrastructure account was established by the council back in 2019. There was roughly $1.3 million into that account. And every so often, when I, we get the opportunity to replace a water line, we do so, and I come to you to pull funds from that account. So in your package, you should have a breakdown of the cost to replace that water line over there on, from Rock to Lamb, roughly $30,786. And just so you know, the history on that, the contractor that's actually doing the work on Nelson and Mill, that was an alternate bid for them to do, and they came in and had a price of $79,000 to do that job, to tie that in. So we could do it cheaper, quicker, and so that's what I asked for those funds to cover the cost for that.
Any questions?
Will you be doing this the same time that they're kind of over in the area, or is this after the fact?
No disrespect to you guys, but we actually finished it last week. We had, well, we had a break in the weather, and I was able to pull both my departments together, and we laid 440 feet in two days, so.
You just need to pay for it now.
Yes, sir. Hey, I'm honest.
Do I have a motion on the floor to accept, to pay, to get Stony out of debt?
So moved.
Okay, Shaw, Ashley, Gunner? Ashley?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
McEwen?
Aye.
And Shaw?
Yes. Thank you.
We were gonna take it out his eye if y'all didn't give anybody.
Good job.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to approve the 97th District arson task force interlocal agreement by Fire Chief Doug Page. So, Mr. Page, you have the floor.
Madam Mayor, Council, this is a, an agreement between Archer, Clay, and Montague Counties and the Bowie Fire Department to share resources to investigate fires. We have the same thing going back towards the east with the North Central Texas Arson Task Force that we're a member of, and they've proven invaluable for large-scale investigations, fatality fires, complex arson fires, and it's just the more hands you can get involved, the better your outcome on the investigations.
So does this obligate us to them as well?
Yes.
At any cost, or just-
No, it's whatever our cost is.
Same the other way, though?
Yeah, it would be essentially just whatever we would pay for if I were doing it here.
Okay.
The same with them. If they come here and they get injured, it's on their counties.
So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Post, do I have a second?
Second.
Bates? McEwen?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
And Gunner?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to approve the hotel motel report. Pamela put a nice little report together for you guys tonight. Pamela, would you go back to the podium?
I have to be quick, because they're-
I did ask her to put, um,
They're fueling me over there.
To take us through the end of the quarter, the first quarter, but I did ask her to put Januaries on there, and then she got really, then she got really fancy with us and put Februaries on there.
Well, as you receive on, as you look at this report real quickly, the assets, revenue, and expenditures, the assets are your bank accounts and/or your savings accounts. We have one cash and one taxable account, and then you go down, you'll see the actual revenue. The first quarter is 25%. Our revenue is at 39.84% for the first quarter. Our expenditures are at 34%, so overall, we're $6,331 with revenue over expenditures the first quarter, and then through January also, we're $3,823 with revenue over expenditures, and then, darn it, I was wanting this deposit to hit on the 31st, but it came in on February 2nd, and deposit for hotel motel tax of $21,630. And most of these expenditures are spent for, they do a wonderful job, billboards, advertising for our cities, and I've been reviewing those, and some of that advertisement's just beautiful, the way they lay those out to other cities. The magazines are going out to other cities, bringing people into our city for our special events and so forth. They just do a wonderful job.
So as you can see, the number's building up again finally, after the COVID and the debacle of that two years. So it's looking good again.
That's because I'm mean.
You are mean.
I'm making a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gunner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Shaw? Ashley?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
McEwen?
Aye.
Gunner?
Aye.
Shaw?
Yes.
All right, so the last item on the, it's the one I love to hear every year. You do. We take the best for last. My husband and I went over this line by line the other night.
Quite the date night.
No, we didn't have anything else to do.
Oh, can I tell you one thing that's not about this? Just an item of interest. I apologize, I have forgotten to tell Bird about this. The, if you may have noticed, the new yellow signs at the railroad underpass at Mill Street, since he, she talked about that, it reminded me. We had a meeting with Tech Stop Friday. They've installed those lights, and the police department dispatch has the ability now, if a police officer, firefighter, somebody, city employer, whatever, says, hey, it's starting to flood right there, which y'all know we are flooding, we have the ability to activate those lights.
Yes, that's fantastic.
And then turn them back off. So the plan in the future, they tell me, is to possibly, if that works good, is to put sensors in the grate. When it gets to a certain level, they'll come on by themselves, but right now, we're gonna-
Well, tell them don't waste that money on the sensors until after they build us a new underpass.
Right, right. Okay, so this is the annual racial profiling report, and for some of you that may be new on the council, we're required, every law enforcement agency in the state's required to do this yearly to the governing body. And it's your job to make sure that we are not enforcing things by race that doesn't meet our demographic in our city. So, and Doug, you need to do your racial profiling report.
We're exempt.
He's exempt. He doesn't do traffic stops. Okay, I don't know if you want me to read this whole thing, but the gist of it is-
No, no, we don't.
You do? You wanna hear the whole thing? 4,147 traffic stops in 2023. You do? You wanna hear the whole thing? Four thousand, one hundred and forty-seven traffic stops in two thousand twenty-three. But if you wanna flip down back here to the back, it'll tell you what you really need to know as far as you're making sure I'm doing my job properly. Um, out of those traffic stops, ninety-three percent are on city streets. Go figure, we're city police department. Ninety-two percent are of those, did we, did not know the race before we made the traffic stop. And ninety-one percent of the traffic stops were to white people and significantly less other than that, which meets our demographic. So I don't see any problems with that. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them for you.
Are you racially profiling?
No.
Perfect.
Okay.
Any other questions? I, I trust you all got a chance to look at it in your packet, so I'm just gonna go ahead and call for a motion to accept the racial profiling for it, as, report as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Post. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, Bates?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Gunner?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
And McEwen?
Aye.
Well, that concludes our, oh, wait a minute, do we have any public comments? Anybody? Yes, Mr. Calibretta?
Just come up and, and let the city know that, uh, there's a new movie out, it's called The Hill. And, uh, The Hill has a lot of roots here in Bowie, Texas. And, uh, the Rick Hill, uh, is the star, I guess, the, you know, character. And, uh, his father was the pastor at Eastside Baptist Church, uh, April sixty-four to December sixty-five. And, uh, they visited and, and you can see some pictures of them at the, uh, the life and, uh, at our church and that kind of thing. So I just thought that, uh, you might, might just find that interesting.
Thank you. Thank you.
Apparently, too.
It wasn't gonna be.
A good movie.
I'm glad you said that, cause I was wondering if those pictures on Facebook were fake or not, you know?
No, they're.
It's the real deal.
That's good.
They're real. Alright, thank you.
Okay. Uh, no other public comments, then we will.
I have one again. I want to ask again if we could start having some bi-monthly or quarterly meetings to, um, workshop meetings with the council.
Okay, so I, I don't have a problem with that. We're working on a plan for that. But what I do need to, to tell you is that. And I, I need to say this in, in the nicest way I can, but as a council member, you need to come and talk to me or the city manager.
I thought two people had to.
And, 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 no, 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 no. I'm talking about, you're taking yourself out of your appointed chair, your, your elected chair. And putting yourself in public comments. And as a council member, that's not your position to do. So if you would just come to talk to either one of us, we, we're always available to talk. But as, in your capacity, you should stay just as a council member behind this bar and a public member outside of here.
Understood.
Thank you. And we will work on what it is you want. Although I'm not planning to move public comments, I will tell you that. Because since you were a council member, the state law has changed and it allows us to have anybody talk during that. And even before I was mayor, it seemed. It seemed a little out of order to me because most people wanna hear what's going on in the meeting, so they'll know what to ask at the end of the meeting. But that was actually prior to you being able to ask any questions during the agenda items. So it, to me, I'm gonna keep the public comments at the end of the meeting. Any other? Alright, what was the time? We're going to adjourn at six fifty-three. Yeah, y'all get on the road.